What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session. Today we're gonna be looking at a little homework. So you are in the big line and you check on a king queen tree board against the button. The button is like betting small. And I wanna know, how do you construct your strategy with your kings here?
I mean calling and raising probably.
Yeah. So, how are you guys doing?
I'm still playing, so.
Good evening, good morning.
Hey.
Hi Max.
Anyone wanna take a shot?
If I just have a straight king, I'm just gonna check call. A call, I guess it is. I have two pair. Raise. A straw raise.
Okay, but what about the kings here? What do you do with, say, king dukes? You call?
Yeah.
King tree?
Yeah, just gonna call with everything that's not, oh, it's king three two pair.
This, this is two pair.
Okay, I'm gonna raise.
Okay, so you'd raise here. Okay, and then what do you do with king four? You just called, you said? King five, king six, what do you do with king seven?
Still call.
What do you do with king ten?
You have a straight draw there, right?
King queen tree.
Might raise king ten.
Okay, what about king jack? Raise as well?
Yeah.
King queen?
Yeah.
Well, where, what do you do with king nine? King eight, you call as well?
Yeah.
And your suited kings, you're playing pretty much like this?
Yes.
Okay.
I was having a strong. I had two hearts.
Okay, and then I wanna know, what do you do with queen tree?
That's two pairs too.
Yeah?
Yeah, raise.
So alright, this is pretty good, but in reality, we wanna raise more with like hands like king on nine and king eight. So that's the first thing you wanna start doing maybe a little bit more. And then you want to slow play with some two pairs as well. So for example, here, yeah?
Is there a difference between having the king of hearts or not?
Uh, no. I didn't really pay attention, but no, this is really.
Not a big difference, you bet a bit more of the king of hearts.
It's really the kicker that is, that is the kicker, the value of the kicker, basically.
Yeah.
So we wanna construct our strategy with the value of the kicker. We can, we can dig like king nine, king eight, but we also need to find slow plays here. So you need hands like two pair in your check calling range. Cause that's gonna, that's gonna make your range a lot stronger. So king three suited, king three offsuit, like top, top, top. Like a king queen, you always wanna raise that. Uh, bottom two, you always kind of wanna raise that, but top and bottom, you can always usually slow play it.
That's a pattern, I think. You see that in a lot of situation, I think. The top bottom is
Yeah.
So that the other one.
So this is how you construct your, your strategy without bears here. Top bears and two bears, so like, make sure that we, like, our strategy is kicker oriented. And then we want to have top and bottom protecting the calling range. So yeah. Uh, that was pretty nice. Uh, if you guys want today, I would also like to do a database review. If one of you guys wanna show us that, that base, I could do that.
You'll show.
Alright. So you can share the screen and show us the moves.
Yes, 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 yes. Do you see it?
Um.
Yeah, screen. Okay. All days, I have exactly the freshest 100 fans.
Alright.
And this is my big plan per hundred.
Okay, so I, I want you to go in the, in the stats that we are gonna see on the last line. And I need to see river call efficiency.
Uh, here. Okay.
I don't think it's in here.
Configure report, I forgot how to. Uh, yes.
River call efficiency. And then put this one on the left, because I wanna see it. Right next to it.
As well, I agree, it's an important parameter.
Where did it went now?
You had it.
You see?
Hey, what is the river call efficiency?
It's whenever you put one chip on the river calling. Uh, how, how many chips you get in return?
Yeah, you want next to repeat?
Yeah, please.
I have a quick question. What is the attempt to steal stat? What does that mean?
Whenever you're late position and you're trying to steal the blinds.
I think it's uh, cutoff button and small block.
Alright, well, I have some flash news for you, Maxi.
Yes.
So whenever, no, no, no. But whenever you're calling the river, a river bet from the button.
Yes.
You are losing your shirt. Stop, if you completely stop calling rivers from the button, it's gonna be better. If you just close your eyes and stop calling every river bet from the button, it would be better. Because then you, you'd be, you'd have one.
Yeah.
Whereas now, you're losing chip. Do you see the 0.66 on river call efficiency? So when, whenever you call one chip on the river for the last 12,000 hands, you get 0.66 chips back. So your river call on the button is really not good.
From the car. Is it against the blinds or all over?
That's all over.
That's all over.
Okay.
Whenever you call, you're looking at the, on the button facing a bet on the river, just close your eyes and don't call it, don't trust yourself. Uh, from the cutoff, you're slow playing too much. That means like, you're getting on the river with an overly strong range.
Hey Louis, question. Um, did you, uh, why don't you filter to see if he's losing massive pots or just like small pots on the river? To see like, I don't know, he may be making like 200 big blind call offs that are just like wrecking his number.
Uh, yeah, we're gonna look basically for every stack depth right, right after it. I'm just taking a quick peek. So like, we're gonna do, because I think it's more interesting if we look at from zero to 20 and then.
Yeah, I agree.
I have to stop this. And Louis, what's the number you're looking for, a range of numbers you're looking for under that?
For the river call efficiency, a really strong river call. Uh, if you're over two, you're slow playing too much. You're getting to the river with the range that is too strong. So a little bit less than two or somewhere around two is the sweet spot. If you're over two, you are still playing too much.
And if you're under one, you're, if you're under one, you're.
Yeah, you're screwing up, like even like.
Under one for sure.
Yeah, you wanna have like somewhere between 1.5 and two for your river call.
Cash games, it was more like, I think 1.5 for the sweet spot. There could be that in tournaments, it's different, I don't know. But also depends of course on the, if you're micro or whatever stakes you are.
So now we wanna see from zero to 20 big blind.
From zero to how many?
Twenty.
Uh.
He doesn't, he doesn't have many.
We, we can do it that way as well, it's okay, but I, like 10 big blind game, sure, we can look at it.
10 to 20.
No, 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 look at, let's, let's do this ball first. See your EV, see all you're doing.
Man, why is it not working? I remember I had some issue with this filter.
Okay, so just, uh, just remove it.
It was working, uh.
Or yeah, just wait, because it's treating the hands, okay.
It's zero to 10, right now.
Now wait to until it populates, take some time.
It's seven.
And for the small one. Well, it's not loading here.
Is it, uh, because it's zero to 20 instead of one to 20?
There could be no river calls, huh? Zero to 10. But he's always all in pre-flop, then there are no river.
That could also be true.
Are no hands. Could be.
Yeah, just, uh.
Go to 10, 20.
Just change the filter.
10 to 20.
10 to 20 is working?
Yeah. But.
Right. So your big blind play from this stack depth is not optimal. So like, you should be, you should work on your big blind play for this stack depth. Actually, button versus big blind. For 20 big lines. Uh, it's, it's your, it's one of your worst seats actually, because everything else is kind of good. The button should be, it can be better, it can be around 35.
Minus 35, yeah?
Uh, this one should be around minus, minus 30. You can get that to minus 30 easily. And for the button, you can make it up to 35.
But it is 35, are you mean all in adjusted?
Yeah, never look at the big blind per hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, but the big blinds probably easiest to fix.
Number one leak I see here is the big blind defense. And it's exactly calling the river from the big blind, look at this, 0.4. So you, you need to absolutely stop calling river from this stack depth.
From the big blind also.
Already on the flop, I'm mistaken.
Yep. Like from early position, middle position, you're kind of breaking even, so it's not a big deal. All blind is decent. Uh, but yeah, it's really your river call that is bad from the big blind.
Maybe also look at your flop, she bet calling here, the big blind.
So the way I would do it, Maxi, since you have sims, I would strain big blind versus button 20 big blind. And you put yourself out of position and you do 200 hands per week.
Okay.
As the big blind luck, luck out of position. Uh, show me your three bets now.
Three bet success, three bet pre-flop.
Three bet, okay, so seven, seven is a bit slow, it's not so bad. But you probably wanna three bet a little bit more from the big blind for sure. You need to find more three bets.
I'm working on it. It's just a pre-flop, like, I just need to three bet more according to the three bet chart. Open crutches, I mean. It's 10 to 20.
Yeah, um, scroll to the right now.
If I raise, it's very low also. Oh no, it's also a two betting. Sorry, go ahead Louis.
So 20 big blind, hang on, I'm gonna look at my pile now. Uh, because I think I found something else. 20 big blind, big blind versus small blind. We are playing 70, 80% of that time. Okay, so as we see here, if you look at fold big blind versus small blind, you're folding 60% of the time from the big blind facing a small blind raise, I guess.
Uh, what are you looking at? Can you repeat?
Fold BB versus small blind, it's on the left, it's next to three bets still, yeah, to the right a little bit, right, right? So it's fold big blind versus small blind. So overall, over it on the top stat, which can explain to you what it is.
For, okay, so what do you want me to do now?
Well, if I look at the 20 big blind chart on my pile solver, we are playing 82%, 82% of the range against the big blind. So that means we should be folding around. We, we could overfold a little bit, say, but we can't really over, we should be playing, like this number should be around 20. Right now, we're playing 60% of the time against a small blind. So you want to work on your pre-flop blind versus blind for 20 big blind, that's what it means.
Mm-hmm. Uh, from the big blind, yes?
Yeah, from the big blind at 20 big ones.
Uh, also the sims. Yeah, we have the sims.
Yeah, you're folding to steal too much as well. So fold to, uh, steal is basically one of the late position opens. And you are defending your blind, whether you're in the small blind or the big blind. So from the big blind, you fold 60% of the time, from the small blind, you fold 80% of the time. So that means you don't, you're like, they steal from you. From the small blind right now, your play seems fine, because your EV is good. So I wouldn't change anything, but from the big blind, there, there has to be some changes.
Fold to steal, okay, okay, oh man, I lost it.
There's a difference between all ins and non-all ins, of course.
It's right next to limp.
This one, yes.
And what should the fold to steal be approximately, Louis?
Uh, let me verify.
18%.
18?
For the.
Against the min raise and not, if you're 20 bigs deep. Alright, I wonder if there are a lot of shoves in this. That would, that would play something at least.
Because like, one of the things, like, um, between 10 and 20, you're gonna face a bunch of shoves as well too, right? When you're that stacked up?
Yep.
So like, it's gonna be a little higher than maybe, like, than if you're 40 big blinds deep for sure, right?
So my.
Almost no shove.
My own numbers from the big blind, I'm folding to steal 50% of the time, a 53. And 77% from the small blind. Okay. But my EV is around nine and all in adjusted, from the big blind, I'm minus 26. So I guess like fold to steal around 53 seems to be decent. But my, my three bets for this stack depth, what is your three bets here for this stack depth? Uh, three bet pre-flop? Okay, you're at.
7.4.
No, for the big blind, you're at nine, I'm at 17.
Yeah. Probably uh, two betting the small blind more.
Uh, the big blind, from the big blind, I'm at 17, and from the small blind, I'm at 13. I'm at 12.5 total three bets.
I have 16, yes?
So you have seven, seven total, so you need to find more three bets basically, from the big blind.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I know that.
Go to pre-flop then, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah. That, oh, stack depths.
Um, yeah.
Those, uh, those fold versus steal numbers, if you have some pre-flop charts, you can just kind of take the average.
Yeah?
Yeah, I was just sharing with them if they, people who were asking didn't know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Get those numbers.
Yeah, 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 yeah. How much should it be from the chart here to compare? Okay.
Okay, now let's see the rest of your database for this depth. Let's scroll to the right.
I have only 16,000 hands for this depth.
I would like configure the report and add versus small blind limp. Or the big blind.
First on limp.
Versus. Oh. No, just write again versus small blind, and then there was a call. Versus SB, and then look at the BB versus SB open call, what is this?
Yeah, but that's a raise, Louis, it's not a limp.
Ah, okay, okay.
So now it's on limp, uh, Max.
Right, flip?
There, limp, put in limp, you probably will find it somewhere in there. Pre-flop limp, call, limp raise. Raise with small blind limper in the big blind.
This one.
I think you're looking at that, Louis, or?
A big blind defense against the small blind limp.
Hmm.
Yeah, this is raising the limper? Yeah, you can't, you can't fold, so it's, uh, you know, you either raise or call, I mean. So that's, that's the one you're looking for.
Oh, raise versus lingers.
Yeah. That's the one.
Yeah.
Okay. Where do you want it at the end? Or next to something?
I want it wherever, as long as we see it.
Raise my small blind openly, yeah, that's it. How much do I raise small blind limper?
Yeah.
It's here, Louis.
Okay, good, I'm looking, uh. Alright, so what is your number?
Uh, 48.5.
So you're limping back 40% of the time, 48?
Yeah.
No. Uh, limping back.
Rest is limping back, how much is it?
How much are you raising?
I'm raising 48.4.
Yeah, then it's 52.
52, yeah.
Good morning, good morning, good morning.
Hey, good morning.
My second good morning this morning to some of you.
Afternoon.
Yeah.
Morning.
I think that's fifth or not.
So it's basically raising 35% of the time and calling 58% of the time.
I have the vice versa then.
Yeah.
So need to be.
You need to limp a bit more, you, you need to raise less, because you're raising too much.
From big blind, yes?
Yeah, you're raised too much from the big blind.
How much should be?
Uh, well, it should be, you should call around 58% of the time. You should limp back around 58% of the time. And you're limping back, what? 53?
52.
So you're too aggressive from the big blind facing a small blind now. And right now, I see, uh, the way, like, people are taking advantage of like overly aggressive players from the big blind, so they're getting more tricky with their small blind limping strategy. They limp more and more good stuff if, if they think you're gonna raise.
Yeah.
I raise a lot of ace x, need to then come over the top. That's a good plug.
These are your personal, these are your personal notes, LP?
Uh, this is Maxi's database, we're looking at.
Oh, he's losing his shirt.
Yeah. No, no.
That's what you said, on the river.
Well, that's what I, he calls too much from the button. Like, he just closes eyes and folded to every river bet, he would win chips versus the actual.
Calling.
Yeah.
That means that, okay.
So, um, LP, when you're doing this, do you then go and filter to look at the hand examples associated with that? Uh, in order to kind of figure out where the changes could be? Cause I mean.
For sure, for sure, for sure, but right now, I wanna have a bigger picture of his game.
Absolutely.
So we take a look at 20 big blind, we try to find a couple of stuff you can plug, then we look at between 20 and 40. We do the same thing, and then we try to find the fixed major league. Once we have these notes, like on a notepad like this, we turn around and say, okay, I need to work on this. So you can go directly on the trainer after that, that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna find in the league, and then we're gonna jump on the trainer. Okay, thank you. So looking at like his own ends, I, sure, it's good, but for the group, uh, it's better if we, the way I like to do it, at least, we went on a look at my stuff, is that I find leaks in general like this, and I then jump directly on the trainer based on what I want to work on, say, today or this week. Uh, alright, show me the database again. Actually, I want to, like, we know we have a problem from the big blind here, and the other stacked up are pretty decent. I wanna see between like higher stacked up, usually. like higher stacked up, usually I ask for between twenty and forty, can you give me, yeah, you can, okay.
Are those people selling food and stuff outside your shop?
Uh, yeah, there's a guy who likes to come right next to my house and yell. Hey, really?
I thought that was at my house.
He loves it.
Makes sense, since you're Mexico.
Okay, so we have another leak from the big line, actually, you know what, our, all of our win rate from, because we're actually doing well from other seats, all of our win rate disappears from the big blind again.
So hold on, I I think, I I was checking, oh wait, never mind, never mind, never mind.
All blind also, you know?
And and yeah, here, well, not as big of a problem, like the big blind is really, really where it needs to work. And look at the river call efficiency again. Both from the button from the big blind, like you have many seats that you're just uh, never in a good spot when you call the river.
Ah, he's uh
Especially the big blind, the button here, like the button, you're you're you just
Calling station.
Yeah. Sorry to tell you, bro, but uh, yeah, you can do better from the button and from the big line here. Do you want to stop, totally stop, avoid coming, calling river both from the button and the big line? Just stop it. If you find yourself on a river from the button facing a bet, just say they never bluff. You're somehow
Yeah.
Don't bluff, guys.
Even if you draw state, don't laugh a lot.
Which is uh, which is river call efficiency in the in the spots?
Uh, it's zero point three for the button.
Oh, my God.
And
But I think that's true, what you see a lot in the playpools, at least that I play, is that they don't bluff the river.
Yeah, they don't bluff.
Almost no, no, no bluffing on the river, so yeah. Bluff cash way less.
Okay.
Man, I I even did it, noticed myself that I'm a calling station in the river, that's just crazy, that's
Yeah.
I had that leak also, I mean, it's so frustrating to come to the river and and uh, what I have, I think I have still a chance.
Okay, so you want to work on your three bets here because a three bet of six at this stack depth is not not
Yeah, winner steals on that, I don't know, about short stack, deeper stack, it should be about fifteen from the big line.
And a lot on the big line.
Why steal, attempt to steal, is that it?
Still small blind open. Or raise over the lamp, there's, yeah, look at those.
You can also uh look at the three bet further still, uh, and then I middle the 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 cutoff button and uh uh, small blind steals.
Three bet pre-flop.
Get the charts and then and say, hmm, on average, should be something like this, and look at what you want.
Yeah, weak over a weak. But it's good, it's good that that
Yeah.
Hey, uh, for this button, river call efficiency?
Yeah.
Do you check the turn a lot?
Hmm, no.
I I don't know how you're even getting to a position where you're on the button and you're forced to call down like that often.
Four to four, you bet is very high.
I know, it's it it like it doesn't happen that often, but when it happens, he's he's not doing well. So like we need to avoid this spot, basically.
I mean, I think my river
Maybe it's like uh under they're gonna open and then uh, and then button calls, or maybe we open from the button, we get a tree bet, we hit something we shouldn't continue with. Uh, but there's something here.
I knew mine was gonna be kind of
The river call efficiency is like the fill in bets of a position and then we have to call, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so like we're 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 either calling down block bets or like
Play too passive.
Calling down with like third pair or something?
Yeah.
We count arrows too much.
Max, he's impatient, man, I'm gonna tag you yellow the next time.
Which is overall, which is overall went to showdown.
I'm tagging him blue like a whale.
Oh, man.
And call.
A light blue like a loose purse of fish.
Did you get any more information on a good went to showdown?
Hmm.
Talk about it.
And three bed steel isn't too bad, on fourteen, that's not terrible.
Three beds still this one.
But I maybe should be higher still.
Maybe a little bit, but it's not bad, it's not awful, I mean, it's almost fourteen, it's not, it's close. I think fifteen's pretty good, so.
More to three bet.
Is there, can you add the win dollar when when to showdown?
I just went to showdown, I wanna see how often you're getting a showdown too.
When to showdown?
That's another indication, if it's high, it's another indication of playing a bit passively on all your streets or um just playing uh, or just getting there with too bad of a range, combination of both could be.
Looks like his um, his C bet on the turn is between about forty-three and fifty-five percent. Um, is that uh, is that a little low, is that one of the reasons maybe he's not double barreling enough?
I mean, it's probably part of the reason, I think it should probably be close to fifty.
I believe it's a bit high, yeah, it's not low.
No, I think it could be
So you should be betting the turn less than sixty-five percent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Normally, yes, depends on uh, yeah, I think so, normally.
C bet turn is forty-nine, yeah?
I think it should be about fifty, shouldn't it?
Hold on, I think I got that stat somewhere.
Looking at
I I might, I guess C bet turn should be fifty, I think betting turn overall, sometimes you're gonna delay C bet or
I'm at thirty percent, my turn bet is thirty percent.
Yeah, it's probably, it should probably be around thirty-three.
Turn aggression frequency for me is twenty-nine, thirty.
I think that's more closer than uh sixty or fifty.
So I'm thinking, I'm thinking all bets, I'm thinking delayed spet and continuation bet together is probably close to fifty.
Nah, still not right.
You see that you you barrel too much right now.
Probably is, I do that also a lot.
Because they fold.
No, because I'm a fish.
Yeah, that's also my blue tact.
Hey, how are we all?
I just do it too much with hands that uh don't have any additional equity or something like that.
Yeah, I'm doing the same and I'm barreling it with the big bet this tip, sixty percent at least.
You can only do that with hands that can bet big, uh, that also bluff that can bet big.
My turn C bet is
If you find the right ones, then yeah, then it's okay, but
Yeah, I'm doing it with a range bet with the bigger cards, starting from jack, well, I'm just to
What is your, what is your C bet and fold? C bet and fold should be about forty.
What do you mean, fold to C bet?
No, when you C bet and get raised, what is your, how often do you fold?
Hmm.
That could be an indication of calling too much, what is it?
Fold, fold to flop C bet.
No, no. You C bet flop and fold. You don't have that, they raise and then you fold.
He doesn't have
Fold to check raise then, that means.
Well, it's not necessarily a check raise either, because sometimes you're gonna open from, say, under the gun, to get called by hijack. And you may C bet and they may raise and you may fold, so it's not always the check raise, but your fold there should be about forty.
My fault to flop check raise right now is thirty.
It's not, that's not the right stat, I don't, I'm not a pick three, but it's not
For a lot of those, uh, Ken.
What is it?
Ken, can you hear me?
It's counting for a lot of those.
I have a quick question regarding that. He has it, it's it's the the stats on there.
Go ahead.
See better flop and fold.
Where is it?
Uh, go to the left like four, yeah, right there, he has it.
What's it just? Is that C bet flop and fold, are you sure?
No, this is the C bet flop.
Yeah, C bet flop and fold.
Left of that is a two bet pre-flop and fold, that's fold into a three bet.
As a pre-flop, right?
It's pre-flop, as the aggressor is.
You're folding too much there.
Sixty percent is a lot indeed.
So I need to what, what I need to
Three bet enough, I don't mind that. Depends on how uh, often you get a three bet.
Yeah. My population is three betting tight.
Well, are you supposed to be calling that three bet or four betting?
Uh, you got, you gotta defend a combination of uh, four betting and calling roughly sixty percent, so you fold about forty percent to a two, when you two bet pre-flopping a three bet, you should continue with roughly fifty-eight to sixty percent of your range, one way or another. And when you C bet flop and get raised, you gotta uh, continue with roughly about sixty percent of your range as well in that spot, or fold forty percent. But I was, I was way over calm, when I first looked at that stat, I was C betting and continuing with like, like seventy-five percent of my range, I was getting destroyed. I I typed that one up pretty fast.
You never believed them.
No, I was a call station, absolute call station.
Alright, Maxi, now show us the forty big blind to sixty big blind.
I will tune it up, Louis, so uh, let's come to a conclusion, so C bet turn is forty-nine, I should uh barrel less.
Barrel less on the turn for sure, you should barrel when you pick up equity.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so now
You should stop, but like you might be barreling a size, you might be barreling when you don't pick up equity, so that
Yeah, I'm doing that, I'm doing that, I know that.
Yeah, can you, it did the filter um currently active to just remove the twenty and forty and make it forty and sixty?
Yeah, I'll do that, and went to Shandong, he wanted to sell, so.
Uh, my C bet turns fifty-five percent, I didn't, I never had it on my stats, I never looked at it, it's fifty-four point nine five.
It's easier, so Louis does the review on, have fun talking between them.
Um.
I'll make it fifty, sixty, almost sixty big blinds broader, so I mean, I don't know if that's a leak or not, honestly.
It did quick filters, bottom right?
No, I can't do that, I will just
Or you can't add to that way.
Ah, no, I think I hmm, group.
Add, add filter?
And add filter. We can do it here.
Yeah, I'll just re- remove the other one first.
Okay. This one, yes?
Yeah, both.
Forty and sixty.
Yeah.
Oh, boy. Well, I did it, Louis, I double cashed yesterday, I've never played two tournaments in a day.
Very nice.
Or fourteen, fourteen hours of play live.
No, man.
Pretty tired at the end of the second tournament.
Did you read the same casino both times?
Yeah, yeah.
Which one?
Orleans. Good for you, man. Third, third and a thirteenth.
Live tournament?
Yeah. So tired, but you know, five hundred bucks an hour, fourteen hundred bucks for fourteen hours profit, that's pretty good.
Yeah, again, you are unable to call the river from the button.
Funny.
On all deaths, stack deaths.
Yeah. And somehow from the cutoff, you are always slow playing like a madman at every stack depth.
That's it, Louis.
What's wrong with you? Why do you slow play?
So unevenly Anita, that's
You only treat it five percent here, Jesus, you're a nit, you're nit
You should pull up a hand history, you, I don't think you've ever done a hand history with us, Maxi, have you? They helped me a lot.
No, 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 I haven't, I haven't, I have not.
Oh, you have not, yeah, I mean, they're very helpful, I they've, I've done uh, probably a dozen on with you guys, and they are great help.
Yeah, I give you a lot, a lot of credit for subjecting yourself to this abuse, Maxi, it's
Hey, man. I wanna learn.
Your button, not high enough. Twenty-three.
Okay, okay.
It it can be better, so your button
Okay.
Is is too low. You wanna work on the button here?
What is too low from the bottom, what's that?
The EV, all in adjusted big line per hundred, it's at twenty-three, it can be thirty-five.
Mm-hmm.
And then the number one leak in your game, the big blind play.
Yeah.
I think there are two, actually.
So big one plane is uh is
Not good.
Yeah, hey, so Louis, can you um identify kind of a more refined comment on that, like it's not good in what way?
Uh, the all in adjusted big line per hundred is at minus forty-eight, so right, if we look at the overall, we are yielding one point sixty-six over seventeen thousand hands. But it's really only because of the big blind play, because if we just lost a little bit less, whatever we can save from the big line is gonna go directly into our pocket.
So no, I get that part, the question really is from a behavior standpoint, so in what way is the big blind play bad, is he calling too much, is he playing too little, too much?
Overall, he's calling the river way too much, there is, like here is river call efficiency is okay, but for every other stack that was not, he does not three bet enough, he's always way too low, he's at seven or six, he should be, I'm at fifteen.
I know, yeah, because you're doing, you're responding to a lot of cutoff and button
It's ridiculously high.
Fold to steal is ridiculously high indeed, sixty percent of
Yeah, he folds
Yeah, so it seems like you're being too passive, so that's what, that's helpful to me, so it's the, that, you know, when, when I look at like uh, and I think you changed it already, but when you say, you know, my big blind is bad, to me it's like, well, what do you do with that? You know, as opposed to I'm not three betting enough from the big blind, that's
We need to to do both pre-flop ninja for the big line for all the stack depth where we find problems, and we need to do sim work on the GTO trainer for the type that we find problems with you, and then we try to play more towards GTO. But it's mostly three bets, river calls, and yeah.
Big blind It's interesting, it's the first place you look, that do you find that to be the case a lot on the uh river call efficiency?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Uh, it's very telling, uh, you can see whether a person is slow playing too much, whether a person is calling too much. Uh, for this stack depth, he's slow playing too much overall.
Louis, how how how, what is that show, what stat shows you that I'm a slow playing too much from the cutoff?
Your river call efficiency?
Uh, you mean on the river, yes?
On on the river, from the cutoff, whenever you call one chip, you return six chips, you're somehow slow playing way too much from the cutoff.
Yeah, you have always a monster on the button.
Yeah.
Yeah, hey, can I make a comment on that related to what Maxi just said, so what I think the answer is, and 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 Louis, tell me if you agree, is the reason why your river call efficiency is so high is because you're still playing the flop and turn too much that you're winding up on the river with too many good hands.
Exactly.
It's a combination of a lot of stuff often, it's sometimes you're not playing aggressively enough, sometimes you're playing too bad, it could be combination, you gotta look at a lot of stuff, I mean, you could be doing you know, range construction, passive, you be passive, you could be, you know
If the call, call efficiency is very high, then normally it's uh, you slow play something, either pre-flop or on the flop or on turn or
Yeah. That's why, that's why I wanted to look to went to showdown as well. That's why, that's why I wanted to look to went to showdown as well, cuz I don't think that should be as high as mine is either. And I know I'm a bit passive on the uh. Uh, flop and turn, and I think that's why I get to showdown a bit. But my river call efficiency is still pretty good. But I still think I have the passive, a bit passive on uh, the middle streets.
If we look at, if we look at the VPIP, scroll to the left, Maxi, you're way too nitty, man. How, how do you only play seventeen percent of hands from the cutoff and from the button?
Wait, you just told me to play, you just told me to play nitty earlier yesterday. I'm not much higher.
Yeah, but he's talking, he's talking about.
I'm talking with Maxi here.
And he's not talking about your play, he's talking about Maxi's play, right?
Yeah, but he say, he thinks that we should all be uh, about ten play the, about ten percent tighter opening ranges, because that's what the best players do. So if that's advice for me, it should be advice for everyone in here.
Now, I should look at the race first and then more than the VP.
No, Maxi is a nit. He has an overall VPIP of eighteen. Okay.
I don't know. I, I'm, I'm, I'm playing by the charts, like. Charts and.
I can guarantee, I can guaran- I can guarantee you that you don't play by the charts for the.
Twenty three and a half, so.
Actually, can you, can you configure the report and add a race first in?
It's here, it's here.
No.
It's PFR, pre flop raise. It's the third line.
Ah, you want to. This is the PFR.
Yeah, if you combine.
Top raise, it's not race first in, sorry.
This is the race first in.
I want. That's telling if you.
He's got it. So.
Look, look, Josh, this is the best.
Should be much higher.
Doesn't have it.
He's got it, raise first.
Yeah, I don't know if that's the right statistic, because how could it be higher than?
It says right, cuz you can raise first in more. His raise first in from the button should be about fifty.
Where does he have it?
He's got the arrow over it.
Oh, that's called river efficiency, that's something completely different.
You're looking at the wrong thing, Joss.
It's okay, Josh. Don't panic, Joss, it's okay.
What there, yeah, right.
Okay.
Same, Josh. You're too passive from the button and cutoff with your raise first in.
Yeah, you're not opening according to Joss, for sure.
So VPIP from the big blind, I see twenty five percent. That's not good. Uh, your overall, you're way too nitty. Do you have a pre flop ninja?
Uh, no.
Oh, you don't? What are you waiting for?
Yes, yes, I should tell.
If you're playing, if you're playing that type of range, you should be at your big, I, I don't know how that'll affect your big blind.
I, I show you the charts uh, on which I'm playing. I'm playing by these charts from the, but these are like a little bit adjusted, is it?
Ah, yeah, but these are a little bit nitty.
Still, look at the button. Raise, raise fifteen from the button.
It can't be nitty, it can't be nitty or than forty five.
It's thirty five percent.
Yeah, you, you're weak.
Look at the chart, look at the chart.
The chart of uh, forty to sixty bigs.
Yeah.
Let's, let's look.
Yeah, whatever you have.
From the button, it's uh. Sixty point eight.
Yeah, that's what I.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense. I mean, how could you possibly beat even twenty when the charts are sixty point eight and you're.
Well, well, maybe.
You're not playing by the charts.
No, you're not playing by the charts, Maxi.
I have a question for you, Maxi. I have a question for you. Say you're on the cutoff, you have like. King five suited, what do you do?
I'm opening.
Okay, from the middle position.
Um, I've opened from king eight, I guess, king nine.
King nine?
That's very tight.
Yeah, so you need to work on your pre flop range.
Can he do a hand range model to see what hands he's playing from that position, or is that too hard?
Uh, he could, but I just know how to do it on HM three.
Yeah, he's telling.
Yeah, so I mean. But you can, you can go to uh.
It's too nitty. I mean, we don't really need.
Instead of overview, if you actually just look at your, if you drop down, I think it has um, uh, hold them here. In the top left where it says. No, no, no.
To me in the report.
No, down, down, down. Where it says under filters, it says, I'm sorry, right above it says report overview.
Report overview, where is it?
Top, top.
Yeah, right there. Hold the hand range visualizer.
Range visualizer. And now you can do race first in, but now you have all positions and you can click a position to see what, from what position you open.
From, from the button, let's say, yeah?
Yeah.
Let's look from the button.
See what it does, there you go. You're not opening your suited hands.
Enough. Think, how much?
Can you give me a, okay, so there's effective big blinds. Can you check that? And then give it at the bottom, yeah, this, and then make us forty big blinds. Thirty and fifty.
Thirty and fifty, yeah.
Uh, okay, now, why is it not, is it showing right now?
Yeah.
There's just two hands, so that can't be.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on.
What other filter do you have?
Filter on. Wow, I have the tax on, I guess. Maybe it's because of this.
Filter any tournament big blind.
No, you don't.
Clear, clear the filter at the bottom.
Oh, yeah, the.
I don't think that's gonna change it, cuz it's the same filter.
No, no.
Although it's. Yeah, that was forty to sixty at the bottom.
I think we got it. At least we, we made it crash. No.
Four hands.
Four hands, that's not good.
What, what else is going on here? All dates?
Remove the effective big blind.
Yeah, I don't know.
How many hands do we have? Seventeen?
Seventeen. It's impossible.
Oh wait, that's right, what position are you looking for? The button, right? Raise first in.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on. Something is. But anyway, I mean, it certainly is.
This is only.
You only have pocket aces.
This is only aces. Open aces.
Oh, right, 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 right. Result for ace. You can only do one hand at a time, right?
So. Oh, yeah, actually, that's all of it. If you actually.
Big blinds again.
Yeah, Yosef, if you actually click on, on one of the uh, grid things, it'll tell you how many hands. So like, if you click on pocket tens. Or any of them, it doesn't matter. It'll say how many times you played pocket tens.
Okay, so a bit different.
So, but I mean, you opened seven two suited from the button.
Okay, so we have eight thousand hands there. So we see it, eight thousand eight hundred in hands?
Yeah, we did from uh, zero to uh.
And we can see your overall raise first in. It's twenty two percent.
Yeah, hey, but do me a favor, re-click the number of the uh, efficient, effective big blind stat, now that we figured out how to look at this. And that'll give you what Louis was looking for.
Okay, so we have here eight thousand.
Twenty two.
Yeah, you seem to be missing a lot of your suited hands, right? You're not playing like king six suited, king eight suited.
Yeah, I guess so.
Know, over all that sample.
Yeah, but I think uh, the filter is limiting uh, in too much uh, to the hands, thirty and fifty.
So what do you do with queen do suited from the button?
Only three ten ten hands. That's not saying a lot, huh?
No, no, no. You're reading it wrong.
I'm folding it, look.
Just listen, if you look at the overall race first in, it says we're looking at eighty eight hundred hands, eighty eight ninety two. The, the, the detail that you see below is only for ten.
Yes, for.
But the grid is complete. Like, you can change, if you click on another, another box in the grid, it'll tell you the specifics for that box. So like, kick on ace two offsuit, for example, just to show an example. Okay, and you see, now you see it says results for ace two offsuit. You played that hand once and you lost two point two three blinds. So it shows you the whole thing in the grid. And so when I say, wow, over nine thousand hands, you never played king eight suited. You never played king nine suited.
Still, Josh, don't you find it strange that uh, ace three is not lighting up at, at all?
Ace three suited or ace three offsuit?
Ace three off.
Yeah, that's the point. He's not playing that hand. That's what, that's what Louis is saying, is you're not playing enough from that position. And this grid. Shows you that he didn't play his two offsuit over eighty nine hundred hands. He didn't play king nine suited over eighty nine.
No, it's, it, no, it's impossible. I, I'm, I'm sure playing from the button keep nice, so that, that's for sure.
Is it possible that he just could have not got dealt it?
You can search your database for ace whatever suited from that position and just check.
Yeah, he's just may have, he just may have never had that hand with the opportunity to open. I'm sure he's had the hand, but he may not have had the opportunity to race first in with it.
Yeah, so I mean, you ought to be right, but what I am saying is if you look at the statistics we were just looking at. His VP was so low relative to what we expected to be. And this actually supports it. So either we're filtering the data wrong and something we're screwing up. Or in fact.
Filter a number of players.
Uh, in fact, Maxi is actually playing tighter than he thinks he is.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
By tournament type too, but that will give a really small sample size.
If you go to report, it might change it.
It's all tournaments, et cetera, et cetera. So that's good now.
Alright, so that doesn't resonate with you, Maxi. You don't feel like you're playing too tight from the button?
No, no, no. I, I'm sure that I'm, I need to play loosen from the button, I guess.
So, like, what do you do with ten four suited from the button?
I'm, I'm folding this.
Queen, jack three suited.
I'm folding it.
Queen doos.
Fault.
Uh, eight five suited.
I'm also folding this. I'm just saying conestly right now from the.
Yeah, so you have like uh, you, your button, you need to open a lot wider.
I fold those as well, actually.
Five eight two.
I'm playing a five suited. I don't always play queen two suited, but.
So the, the way Chris breaks it down, I really like the way he sees it. Uh, he says you need to play every offsuit eight. And every suited five and better. So that's Chris's little pocket trick. So there's more hands than that, okay? But if you just played all the suited fives and all the offsuit eight, that's gonna be really good already. You also are playing hands that you shouldn't play, like king doos off, king three off, king four off.
I don't open nine eight suited from the, uh, nine eight off from the button, I don't think. That's, I don't think that's a good.
Don't?
I don't think.
I always do.
Okay, well, it's, it's in range. Offsuit eight, suited, suited five.
Yeah, not, yeah, it's by my range.
Most of style, open wide again uh, from the button then uh.
Right. So like, you need pre flop range construction. Uh, now let's see your deep stack play. Go back to the first report.
Okay. Was it this one? No, no, no.
The one where we have the positions?
Yeah, statistics. It's, and it's overview.
Happy new year, ladies and gentlemen.
Hey, happy new year, man. Thank you. Now I need sixty to eighty.
What way do you want to see?
Sixty big blind to eighty big blind.
Sixty to eighty, okay.
Hey, how do you set up those quick filters?
Uh, what, you're saying where to, where to have them or how do I do them?
Oh, bottom left here on this uh, uh, screen, you can save a quick filter.
Save this quick filter?
Yeah, so once you set up your filter, in the, there, in the bottom left, there's a button that says save this quick filter, and then you can name it, I think.
Yeah. Oh, okay, thanks.
So what are we working on today then, Louis?
Uh, well, we are doing a little database review for Maxi. And then we're gonna work on his biggest leak.
Maxi, can I ask another question? In this database, you have a variety of tournaments in here. You, you have turbos, PKOs.
Yeah, of course, of course, it's all of them. No, most of them are, yeah, all of them are in this database, I would say.
Is there sitting goes in there?
Yes, a lot of sitting goes, yeah.
Filter them out.
Okay, but how can we do that?
So you, you click uh, your. Click which tournaments you wanna look for, like um. Click MTT, all tournament types, then you see the one, see the boxes, sit and go, bounty shootout, just. Just click MTT, that way you don't have sitting goes in there.
Yeah, you can hear or.
All the way on the left. All, all the way on the left. You see where it says your name, overview, blah, blah, blah. And then you see tournament types, just click MTT, scroll down in that box. No, 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 down, yeah. Scroll down in there.
MTT, ah, here, flex.
Yeah, you should probably just be looking at these, if this is what we're discussing. I mean, you might wanna put re-entries in there, deep stack, multi-entry.
I can, MTTs are here and.
So.
It's not the box, it's under type, you can hit the download. If you hit the carrot button next to all tournament types, I think it gives you MTT.
Normal. I mean, here.
Don't worry about the speeds.
Okay, tournament type, single table, multi. I have multi-table SNGs in here, but not single table SNGs.
Do multi, do multi-table, that's what we're.
There you go, right there, click on that.
You wanna kinda look at.
That's what you wanna.
But I don't play SNGs, I have single table SNGs. I don't play them. I don't have it in this. So they also think it.
They're pretty similar, they're similar to MTTs then.
Yeah, yeah. But they're.
Eighty three, play the uh, what's it, eighty man or something?
Yeah, one eighty man, yes.
That's the same.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I think uh, we need, we can uh, all leave all tournament types. Okay, Louis, now we are down eighty, sixty to eighty deep. My gosh, full of leaks. That's, that's good. Have a work on something. Okay.
Okay, again here, button river call efficiency is not good.
Okay, that's crazy.
He's opening very tight and then still uh. Who made, who made the notes?
See, which side are you playing on?
I do, I did. On, on start.
Really?
Oh, you, you made your, this is your own notes, Maxi, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cuz that three bet success should be like, you, are you using the right size? Like, that should be close to forty.
Uh, sometimes you have calling stations, so.
Well, listen, but yeah, sometimes you have calling stations, sometimes you have people call too much, it balances out. The number should be about forty. People should fold about forty percent of the time to your three bet. If they're supposed to defend sixty percent of the time, they're supposed to be folding roughly forty percent. So that is especially is my poker stores PA site. ACR is, they're four, it's forty. It's like almost right on the morning when I look at the player pool. And my stats, they fold forty percent, thirty nine, forty percent. Poker stores PA is fishy as hell. It's like thirty, thirty one or something. And this is fishy, like they aren't, like, I don't know if you're using like a really small three bet size or.
Three, three or three point five decks.
So I think you gotta bet linear in that game. I think you gotta use a three bet linear side. It, it looks like you are using on linear side, cuz you're only three bets, five or eight percent. So that's good. I don't think you.
Still a head history for Maxi. So that's not good. You won a three bet a lot more than five percent.
Yes, yes, I know that. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm now, I've been before this session, I know that.
Strange indeed.
At the moment, I'm looking for a new three bet spots, just based on the ranges.
So, big blinded, big blinded fans here again, that deep stack.
Sure, you look at your race size also as three bet.
Yeah.
But I'm trusted indeed, I'm so concerned.
And show me more than uh, eighty, more than eighty big blind. All the stacked up above eighty.
Well, then, maybe we just can, no quick filter, then it will show all the deep. What do you think?
No.
Okay, okay.
I just want a deep stack eight now.
Okay.
No, 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 diamonds.
Uh, what should our rebet pre flop be? Like, should it be small, should it be really low from early position? Just cuz you don't have an opportunity to do it very much?
Yeah.
Okay, cuz yeah, I have a big disparity, like my, my free flop from early position is only three point six percent.
That, that would be too low though.
But my overall is eight point nine percent.
That, that's, that's, that's good. Or uh, that's.
Anything over eight, eight, eight to like thirteen is good. LP is a maniac.
I'm at twelve and a half.
I thought you said you were fifteen.
That's difference. Overall, I mean.
So what's your, what's your early position uh, three pet, three bet percent? Cuz.
For what stacked up?
Um, twenty to forty, right, would be my most common.
Okay, I'm at five point six.
And also look at the charts and see it. Without, without looking at my charts, I don't know if anyone else plays a similar type of game. But I tend to, if I'm up against someone who I know is opening like GTO ranges, then I'm gonna free bet them guys more anyway. Yeah, just because I know that, you know, if I, if I think, if I think, you know, if I've got a hand that's like, not quite good enough to call, I'm gonna free bet them every time. Or you're overdoing it, that's what you're saying. No, I don't think I am, Joss, because, you know, most of the time it's gonna be a hand that contains big, big blockers. And I've got position.
Wait, if you, can I ask a quick question? If you think that they're opening a GTO range, do you think they're folding or calling?
They're gonna fold more often than not.
Why?
They're gonna fold more often than not out of position. Why? If they know GTO range, they shouldn't.
I mean, if he, maybe, maybe he's speaking, maybe you mean if he thinks they're playing GTO?
No, no, because of, I'm, I'm talking about players or no. If I'm up against a good player, I'm gonna free bet them wider. If I'm against someone I know is just gonna call, then obviously, those guys, you know, if they start raising, I'm not gonna be free betting them. Very dangerous, so you're making an exploit against players that probably also know you. Yeah, but I'm, I'm also gonna have it, Joss, as well, half the time.
I mean, I don't know. I do find myself betting, free betting more against the better players, because I know they got, they understand range construction, they're not calling too much. They're gonna fold well, and.
Yeah.
They're not gonna float, they're not gonna float to see bets too wide and.
Yeah, can I make an observation on what Tabletalter just said, wh- which is, um, my understanding is, the, the, the exploit is, if you're playing against a player who's playing well, i.e. closer to GTO, your three-bet range should be polarized in GTO-ish. Whereas if you're playing against a weak player, it, the frequency might be similar, but it should be, you should only play your linear, you should play linearly, you should play the top of your range, and maybe add some things, and this is the difference, is add some things still at the top of the range, but at the bottom of that. So you expand your linear range against bad players, and you play polarized against good players.
It's not as, as that.
Okay, go ahead, why not?
I think it, I think it makes you less. It depends on what kind of fish it is. Is he opening lighter and folding more? Is he folding to see bets more? Is he not folding to see bets more?
Yeah, 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 so I'm just starting at level, I mean, yeah, there's always this level of detail, but what I'm saying is, when you start, you know, if you notice somebody's playing.
Then you also play, play GTO, yeah, that's true.
Alright.
Wait, how do you react to four bets, then?
Yeah, I was gonna say, what, what happens if like, they, they, you know, your short stacks, or your maybe ten to twenty bigs, or maybe twenty to forty, and they just, they shove on you with most of the range?
Call the top of your range, you gotta call the top of your range, right? Jacks, tens plus.
Yeah, but aren't you getting owned when they just like four-bet bluff you? Like, ace deuce to ace six suited, they're just four betting you.
No, I, I, I think, I, I mean, at the end of the day, some hands you're gonna call off. And some you're not. Sometimes you're gonna have the bluffs, and sometimes you're gonna have the goods.
Yeah, but when you look at a GTO chart, the four, the, like, the four betting range is quite balanced. So if you're three betting more, just by virtue of thinking that they're playing with a chart, they're going to four-bet you quite correctly, right?
Yeah, so my answer to that question is, uh, again, I'm gonna use this good player, bad player analogy, noting that Joseph's right, that there's more detail. Um, I'm going to, I'm probably gonna be towards the top of my range, but I'm probably gonna call off a little bit wider against the better player, because he is more likely to have a polarized range, including some weak hands.
That's, I agree, and, and especially if they got you covered. If they got you covered, they're probably gonna push a bit lighter anyway. Why? Well, if they've got you covered, it's. Why? Yeah, but why, why does it matter that you, that they got you covered? That's only an ICM situation, I mean.
Alright, Maxi, from here, we have two choices. We can either tackle the sims and play a GTO for your big blind defense, because that's your biggest leak, or we can do a hand history from one of your tournaments.
Well, I think I have the sim.
And his.
Yeah, do a hand history, I think it'll be good.
Okay, okay.
I only four-bet bluff people like LP that I see that are three betting twelve, thirteen, fourteen, seventeen, twenty percent, they get four-bet bluff, no one else does.
I, I have this tip run.